I call to order the Town Council Budget Work Session. Number one, the date is Monday, March 4th, and it is 6:37. If we could please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Tonight is our first Budget Work Session for the 2013-2014 Budget, and the first item that will be on the agenda is the Budget Message. And then we will also move to Accounts 0110, Town Council, to Account 0740, Building Official, and then proceed to Account 1210, Public Library Services. And then, obviously, we always, if there's any other matters of concern. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Alfred. Thank you.
And starting out tonight, I wanted to run over the Budget's Review Schedule. We have meetings tonight, tomorrow night, and Wednesday night, as well as on March 13th with the School Committee. The session tonight, you've already referenced, tomorrow night will be Leisure Services and Public Services Programming, and on Wednesday night will be Human Service Agencies, Employment Benefits, and Emergency Medical Services. So let's get started with the Budget Message, and I'm going to walk through the message with you. The 2013-14 Fiscal Year Program is made up of eight separate funds. Those funds are shown on the first page of the narrative. Tonight, we're going to have a specific discussion on the General Fund. General Fund is looking at an increase of about $873,000, or about 1.19 percent. The, moving on to Page 2, when we look at the Operating Program, Operating Program's up about 2.2 percent. Municipal Debt Service, as the Council's well aware after development of the Capital Improvement Program, we're reducing debt service on both the municipal and the school side. We'll be seeing approximately a $370,000 reduction in debt payment requirements. Capital Improvements will be up $22,000. The transfer to the School Fund is proposed at 1.59 percent. If you recall, when the Performa was developed last December, we had a placeholder of 2 percent based on the submittal of the budget and a recommendation for a reduction of $200,000 in one of the accounts within the school budget. That's been reduced now from the 2 percent down to $767,000, or 1.6 percent. When we look at the General Fund's Revenue Statement, you can see that there's, non-property tax revenues are up almost 4 percent. That's a good sign. Most of that increase is associated with an increase in revenues from state aid, and we'll go over that in some detail, as well as the local revenues are up about $225,000. I've also recommended a reduction in the value of the undesignedated or unassigned fund balance that will be used or forwarded to the 2013-14 year from a million dollars down to $800,000. What this will allow us to do is to maintain unassigned fund balance in the area of 13 percent. The other thing it allows is greater flexibility where the state aids, particularly the two new state aids that have been proposed in the Governor's Budget not to materialize or be approved through the General Assembly. Before, the Council had an opportunity to adopt its final budget before May 1st, we would be able to adjust that undesignedated fund balance without affecting property tax requirements where those revenues to be lost in the state budget process. So there's some flexibility that this will provide us as we move through the budget process itself. If we jump onto Page 3. Page 3 will show what the estimated property tax rate would be. Estimated property tax rate without revaluation is assuming that the tax levy would go up by $591,000, and that we would have a 4 cent tax rate increase. That would be because we would see a 5 cent decline on the municipal side and a 9 cent increase on the school side. So effectively, the overall levy increase would be less than 1 percent, or 0.89 percent. It is a year that we will have a revaluation. While we're projecting here as if we were not having the revaluation, there will be a revaluation. On the top of M3, I've shown you that if we have an 8 percent reduction in assessment value, and we took the average assessment of a residential structure, a single-family unit, in the current year, 1213, it was valued at $348,115. So at the tax rate of $14.50, it would generate a tax levy of $5,048. If you had an 8 percent reduction in the assessment value, or got it down to $320,000, you'd have a rate of $15.76 necessary to generate the same $5,048. When I prepared the Budget Message, we were looking at an 8 percent reduction in assessment value associated with the revaluation. The estimate today is probably closer to 6 percent. I'm looking at around a 6 percent reduction in single-family, and we're probably looking at an effective, maybe 5.5 percent overall tax categories. So if that were in fact the case, we would see, with the tax levy increase of 0.89 percent of the $560,000, we would see a tax rate requirement someplace in the $15.38 range, not $15.76 as shown here. But again, until we get that role certified, where we stand with the revaluation just as a point of interest, is that we would expect to send out values to the property owners probably sometime in the latter part of next week. During the month of April, there'll be preliminary appeal hearings that will be conducted through Vision Appraisal, the Revaluations Consultant for the Town. We would be looking to certify the tax role once those have been reviewed on June 15th. At this point, as they say, I would project that we would probably be somewhere in the area of $15.40, 38 cents, somewhere around there, if I had to give an estimate. But again, this budget's been prepared so that we can compare apples to apples. This budget shows that if we had a $28 million increase in taxable property, that our rate would be up 4 percent, would be up 4 cents. And I think that's the best measure of the budget. When we look at this year's role, I'm also looking at about a $1.75 million estimated increase on the motor vehicles. That too is a projection at this point. We've received the first batch of values from the state, and we'll be doing the reviews on that over the next month. I do want to mention that as far as that motor vehicles is concerned, we do have some concerns because there has been several pieces of legislation that have been introduced, and in that legislation to change motor vehicle. One would change from the average retail value on the motor vehicle to a trade-in value. That could be as much as 20 percent in terms of down value. One, a second bill that's been filed would go from the average retail to the trade-in value, but it would have a step plan where in the first year, 14, the 13-14 year, you would only be able to use 95 percent of the average retail price. In 15, 2014-15, use 90 percent, and in the following year, 100 percent of trade-in value. So at least it would be phased if in fact that were to become reality. There's also a third bill that's been introduced that would establish the motor vehicles as a flat tax. With any vehicle three years or less in age would be charged at $600, and any vehicle over three years would be charged at a flat rate of $360. None of these have come through the hearing process at this point, so we are unsure as to whether or not any of those will come to approval, but I want to put on the record that the budget is a process. We've made certain projections at this time. We may need to adjust those as we go forward. On Page 4 of the Budget Message, I provide a look at the levy and the rate relationship. And here you can see that the levy is going to be up approximately $560,000, and you're seeing a 10 cent increase on the schools' debt service, down 2 cents, 3 cents on being down on the debt service, and a net of 4 cents. If you add the math there, as there's a rounding issue that comes up, truly what the tax rate increase, we're saying it's 4 cents, it actually works out to be 3.54 cents. When we set tax rates, we set them four places after the decimal. So with rounding, we're at 4 cents, but the actual value increase would be at 3.54, or that 0.89 percent. Also on Page 4, we show you that the increase in the tax levies over the last five years has averaged 1 percent. As the Council's well aware, we've got a 4 percent tax cap in the state of Rhode Island. We have averaged over the last five years 1 percent on a compound basis. In other words, starting at the $63,726,000 in the 8-9 year, if you factor that by 1 percent per annum, you'll get up to the $66,970,000. But overall, over the last five years, I think most communities would certainly like to change places with us as far as a 1 percent effective increase on an annual basis. Just a note, the reason why we're showing the tax cap at the bottom of the sheet on Page M4 is to show you, with a 4 percent tax cap, we could raise taxes another $2 million over what we're requesting. As you can see, with a maximum tax cap, we would be able to raise $2,655,000, where we're raising $591,000. And again, if there's any questions that anybody has on the Council, please just bring them up at any time. Moving on to Page 5, it's a comparison on the first chart of the difference between the levy in the 1213 and the levy with the 1314 year. And what we're seeing is that the overlay is increasing by approximately $28,000. When we look at the taxable property, as I mentioned, we're looking at, for this presentation, a $28 million increase. Right now, we're at about $27.2 million that's already been added to the role, so making the $28 million is not difficult. With motor vehicles, I forecast that the Council would set the value of the discount at $3,000 of assessment value, which is the same as it has been over the last two years. So the first $3,000 in average retail value is discounted from any of the vehicles in advance of the tax rate being applied to that net value. When we look at the $28 million, just as a placeholder, we're assuming that tangibles will be up a million, and that the taxable land and buildings up the $27 million. And as I mentioned earlier, motor vehicle role would be up 1.75. For new Council members, it's important to note that we're really operating with two different levies. One levy is on the real estate, which is where we would have the rate of $14.54. And on the motor vehicles, we are required to charge motor vehicles at a rate of $18.71. That is because the state law, when they changed the law, and they were supposed to get rid of all taxes on motor vehicles, they froze the tax rate. And so the rate has been frozen each year, and it was set at $18.71 back in 1998. So since 1998, we've had a tax rate of 1871. In 1998, our real estate tax rate was also $18.71. So at this point, we're not seeing that there's going to be any change in the freeze, but as I mentioned, there's three proposals that are before General Assembly, both in the Senate and in the House, looking to revise the manner in which the tax levy for motor vehicles is established. The chart in the center of Page 6 shows the, what the exemption values have been in South Kingstown. Note that in 2011, it was brought down to $500. The Council brought that back up to $3,000, where it stayed for the last two fiscal years, and where it's proposed to remain next year. I mentioned the concern with the motor vehicles. If we saw a 20 percent reduction, as noted on Page M7, it would mean that we'd have to raise taxes on the real estate by about 16 cents just to make up for that 20 percent loss. Any changes that get made on motor vehicles isn't going to change what the bottom line levy is, it's just simply going to change how much you're paying on real estate versus what you'd be paying on motor vehicles. As long as the levy amount stays the same, it's coming out of one pocket or the other. As far as the adjustments on the tax role is concerned, if we jump onto Page 8, you'll see that when we set the tax levy, we also have to increase what the tax need is by an overlay requirement. An overlay is the amount of taxes we don't collect in the first 30 months from the time that we levy taxes. So when we start begin collecting taxes on July 1st of 2013 through September of 2014, there's going to be about 1 percent that we don't collect, 1.4 percent that we don't collect. So we've got to build that into the base for when we set the rate. It's important to note that we also have a second revenue source on property taxes, which is prior year taxes. Prior year taxes for the 2013-14 year will amount to $545,000, and the interest that's going to be paid from people paying late is 345. So you would, you've got, while you've got a $919,000 overlay, you've got prior year taxes coming in plus interest of 890. So it pretty much washes what the effective tax requirements are for what you're levying in advance to what you're receiving from a prior period. We also have to set aside monies for erroneous assessments, particularly in revale years. If there's been errors that have been made on the calc's for the review of the 14,000 parcels that are being reviewed at this point, there's $120,000 that's available with erroneous assessments. We're also setting the value at 340,000 of what we removed in taxes for the elderly program. During the current year, we had about $335,000 that was committed to that program. And then the last item that's listed there is proration value. Proration is for, the value of your tax role is established as December 31st for the 13-14 year, it's December 31st of 2012 value. So if a house wasn't completed on December 31st of 2012, but was completed by July 1st, we would prorate the value of that house for the six months of the year that it was available for use. So that's why we're subtracting 100,000, because we will add $100,000 to the role over the next year. I would caution the Council also that there's been another piece of legislation introduced that would prevent us from taxing any new properties unless it was occupied, which is outrageous. But it's been submitted, and it would, it will be considered at the General Assembly. Essentially, what they're looking at is that if houses were built on spec, that they would not have to pay taxes until they became occupied, while at the same time, the municipality would be required to have all services available on the first day that they were occupied. That could have an impact on us, particularly as far as what the proration values could be. But it's another piece of legislation that we're watching through the League of Cities and Towns at this time. Moving on, I want to go over the payment in lieu of taxes. What I've done is developed several boxes that will take all of the different revenue sources and lump-like items together. We're expecting, as far as our revenue statement, to take in about $233,000 in payment in lieu of taxes. On Page 8, you've got a listing of each of the different organizations. The Camp Jury is down this year. The reason that the Camp Jury is down is because the Middlebridge School has moved to Narragansett. I want to note that Bayberry Courts is the development next to the police station. They and La Casa Senior Housing are, senior housing that is required to give us 8 percent in lieu of taxes of their gross rental income. So that's why we're picking up those dollar amounts there. The others are pilot agreements that the Council has had over the last several years with various nonprofit organizations. One that comes in through the federal government is a $15,000 in lieu payment from U.S. Fish and Wildlife in recognition of the property at Truston Pond. Other fund transfers are shown on Page M9. These revenue sources really are in two categories. First category is debt service reimbursement, and that's for your impact fees and your open space fund, as well as the senior, the South Road Reserve Fund. Each of those are monies that are brought into the General Fund to pay down debt service and replace the tax dollars that would be necessary if the money wasn't coming from those sources. All of the other accounts there, whether it's water waste, water solid waste, seniors, Neighborhood Guild, or PDOB, are reimbursements to the General Fund for administrative overhead that is provided in terms of administrative services for those organizations and the different enterprise funds. So we've taken about $512,000 against our overall budget from those fund transfers. I'd also note that the amount that will be coming in from the Energy Program, and that, the Energy Program is in its last year, this is for the South Road Reserve Fund, and then the, I'm sorry. Yeah, the lighting upgrade is in the next box. When you get down to the bottom of the page and you see the School Fund Transfers, the School Fund Transfer shows an energy savings for debt service. That is because there was $331,000 back in the '07-'08 year for lighting improvements that were made in various school buildings. The savings that were accomplished as a result of those improvements being made were to pay for the debt service. So what the school department did is they reduced their electric bill, they then paid us over the five years to reimburse for the cost of that capital improvement. The 2012-13 year is the last year for that five-year debt, so the, so you can see in 13-14, that $48,000 doesn't exist because the entire debt has been paid back on that 331 plus the interest. Moving on to Page M10, the general revenue sharing with the state. The general revenue sharing is made up of about nine different sources. General revenue sharing, there is none for the 13-14 year. There is pilot revenue sharing. Pilot is for the South County Hospital, and originally, the pilot program would give us 27 percent of what the taxes would be where the facility, a taxable entity. That's been dropped each year and is now a little bit below 20 percent. That's the 145.9. Library and Endowment Aid is in at $203,000, which is up $7,300 over the current year. The Municipal Incentive Program Aid is in for the first year, proposed in the Governor's Budget for South Kingstown at $288,778. The purpose of the program is to encourage municipalities to improve sustainability of their retirement programs. In essence, it's to try to assist communities to be able to make the full payment of their annual required contributions for pensions. For those communities like South Kingstown that are already meeting their OCC requirements, it really provides a general revenue stream to the community. So it would mean that we would pick up $288,000. That has to be approved, just like all of the other revenue sources have to be approved by the General Assembly. Yes, Meg?
I have a question on that, because that's something I highlighted. I anticipate, because of the fact that there's been problems with pension plans throughout the state, this is something-
Meg, I'm having, I'm not hearing you-
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. I apologize. I did read this, and I had a question about this, and I know that there have been issues about pension plans throughout the state. This is a good situation for us, but is there any anticipated time horizon in terms of when this vote will come to pass, or if we truly expect it to be something that we're going to gain this year, or this fiscal year?
This is only a gain for South Kingstown. We do not have any pension issues that we have to address.
No, I, yes, I mean that-
So, I mean, this program was also set up as a three-year term, and it was, so in the Governor's Budget, it looks to fund this type of assistance to those municipalities that are not meeting OCC over a three-year period. I don't think a lot of thought's been given to what happens in the fourth year if that base revenue were to disappear for those communities, or what it means to South Kingstown. That's one of the reasons why I've adjusted the undesignedated fund balance forwarded by 200,000, so that if the money doesn't come in, that we can make adjustments in the budget without having a profound impact on the tax levy. And also, if we need to make adjustments in the fourth year or in the 16-17 year when these funds are no longer available, that we will be able to adjust and live with that revenue adjustment. So there really is no downside for South Kingstown at this point, other than what happens in the fourth year.
Beautiful.
And again, we still have a long way to go to see if General Assembly's going to approve the programs that have been laid out by the Governor. You know, most of the aids here are aids that have been in place for a number of years, so we're not expecting that there'll be changes. But those are the only three that really come out of the state budget. The next three are pass-through program aids and public service corporations. This is the monies that are paid through the telephone, cable, telecommunications corporations for the properties that are taxable across the state. Utility poles, power structures, and what those dollars are sent back to the communities. They're collected by the state and then distributed back to the cities and towns. So we expect that those, they don't have impact on the state budget. Meals Tax is also collected at the state level, but that 1 percent comes back to the cities and towns. We're expecting that the 1 percent will mean about $650,000 next year in income for the Meals Tax. We're also expecting that the hotel tax, which is a 6 percent tax, that the- We're also expecting that the hotel tax, which is a 6% tax, that the towns get 2%. So we get 2% of the receipts that come through the hotel tax. We expect that to be about $120,000 in the 13-14 year. So we're picking up overall with pass-through funds about $121,000. State reimbursements, this is with the housing aid for the schools as well as the motor vehicle phase-out. Right now, the state assumes 30% interest in principal payments on school bonds that are outstanding. For motor vehicles, they're theoretically reimbursing us for the first $500 in exemption on the motor vehicles, even though we've got $3,000. They're giving us about $167,000 for the first 500. And on library construction aid, and in fact, this will be our last year for library construction aid, $8,800. So the, the, the three aids that you've got to have concern that come out of the state budget are the general, general aid programs where we've got $638,000. The other dollars are really directly related to pass-through and we continue to be conservative as far as our estimates on those pass-through and the state aid reimbursements are pretty much guaranteed because they're based on prior legislation. There is one additional aid that is been brought forward in the governor's budget and that aid is to provide for a local road and landscape, streetscape program. The monies are coming out of a $10 million program out of the, the state of Rhode Island's capital, capital plan fund, which is bond money. And it would be distributed back to the cities and towns based on lane mileage that each of the cities and towns have of local roads. Our share for the 14, 13-14 year would be about $385,000. I have not budgeted that in the general fund because it really isn't a general fund revenue. Based on the way it's been presented in the budget, it would be specifically used for road reconstruction. One of the efforts that the state wants to make is to improve the transportation network within the state as a means of enticing better business, business activities or relationships. So the $385,000 is not in the general fund. I would anticipate that should the General Assembly approve, approve that program as presented in the governor's budget, that it would be a revenue that would be taken directly into the road improvement reserve fund or your capital budget for, for road improvements. And what we would do at that time is we would look at all of the projects that we have scheduled over the next six years and come up with a new schedule based on that increase in funding availability. But it's not a general fund aid. The way it's been framed within the governor's budget, it would have to be used for a dedicated purpose for road improvements only. General Assembly may change that, but since it's a, coming out of the, the capital, the state's capital improvement program, I think it will have to be dedicated for that purpose in the future. If there's no questions on the state aid, I want to move on to the local, local aid program, which starts on page 12. Local love program aids that are going up, more than $10,000 is shown in the first block. As I had mentioned earlier, we're up about $225,000. Most of, of that increase is made up in building inspection fees. We've seen an increase in, in the construction activities in the town. We expect that we'll have over $420,000, but as I say in the narrative here, we've got a couple of large ticket items that really increased what the revenue flow is for 12-13. So realistically, we think 400 is a safe number for 13-14. The non-business license fees were up about $45,000. I've got another chart on the next page that we'll take a look at with that. Rentals of town property, we'll, we'll walk through each of those. The building fees we've talked about, the fees out of the town clerk's office on the bottom of page 12. Most of it is in the recording fees where we're projecting $337,000, which is even less than what we're collecting in the 12-13 year as being the, the principal source of income for the non-business licenses. Moving on to page 13, rental of town property is worth about $400,000 to us. It's up about $11,000 over the current year and as you can see, most of the monies are coming from rentals at Marina Park. Hanson, Stone Cove, Ram Point, Point Judith and URI are all Marina Park rents that are in place, rental agreements. The beach field rental is a, a new program that, over the last few years, that generates about $1,600 a year. South County Hospital rents space from the town at the hospital site for additional parking and pays us around $6,200 next year. The largest, largest number is in the cell tower rentals. There's five units. Two of them, two of them are on water towers and I believe three are at the Public Services Building. You can see that there was a, a larger dollar amount received in the 12-13 year than what's projected in 13-14. We were expecting to lose one of the contracts. Those contracts go for three to five-year periods, they're self-renewing for up to 25 years, but there is constant movement on companies buying out other companies and sometimes they don't need to sell or raise that have already been purchased. They then have to buy out the contract with us. One was bought out in the 12-13 year, but we haven't seen it leave the tower as of yet. So we're still at 125. It could in fact be a little bit higher than that if that, if that tower attachment remains in place during the 13-14 year. Investment income is the last item that we're looking at. I'm sorry, the second to the last. Investment income, we're expecting about $80,000. The chart on page M13 is, shows you what the value of investment income has been and you can see what the market differentials have been. And the chart also shows what the investment rate is. So if you go back to the 2007 year, Allen was earning probably around 5% on idle funds. He's now earning less than 1% based on what market conditions are. So while we were earning almost $1.35 million in 2007, which was a really nice revenue source for the general fund, that's now down to about $80,000. As market conditions change, we may see that increase and if we start to see high yields on, on investment, on investments, then what we've seen over the past 10 years, or what we've seen over the last 10 years is the up and the down. We're at the bottom of that market. It can't go much lower, but we're still forecasting about $80,000 in investment earnings from idle fund management over the 13-14 year. Next item is the EMS or emergency medical services. We receive reimbursement principally through Medicare and through third-party insurance providers for services rendered by the town. We're expecting that we can take in about $550,000 from this source. We have a billing company that works for the town. The money goes into a reserve fund. The reserve fund then contributes to the general fund. So at this point, we're expecting that we can generate about $550,000, which is $50,000 more than in the, in the current year. M14, the police department. The, the key here is as long as we continue to see road projects, which are using police vehicle rentals, we'll continue to see good-sized revenue sources. The largest revenue source here is for traffic tribunal, which are the speeding tickets or other type of traffic infractions, where a portion of the fines collected by the state tribunal is then returned to the town. We're expecting that, that fees from, from those type of fines that are imposed through the traffic court will be about $92,500 in the 2012-13 and 13-14 year. So we'll see about a $10,000 loss, but that $10,000 loss is, is really directly related to, to the vehicle rentals. With the Route 1 project that we had, there was a great deal of activity in terms of use of police vehicles and officers. We've got several smaller DOT projects that are scheduled in the 13-14 year. I don't think there'll be as much of a rental requirement as there was. And the other thing that happened is that the state has required us to reduce what they're willing, or I should say what they're willing to pay for the rental of a police vehicle onsite. So we're going to see about a 10% reduction in what the billing rate will be for us to continue to use our cars on state DOT projects. Miscellaneous revenues, we're expecting with the miscellaneous revenues that, that we will see about a $120,000 or $20,000, I'm sorry, $140,000 up $20,000 over the current year. The recreation department rentals, income, that's solely based on what the different programs are that are going to be run. So we're showing that there's $665,000 in revenues that will come in. If any of the self-supporting programs or the athletic programs are smaller in terms of program participation, there'll be less revenue to come in. Conversely, there'll also be less expense because there'll be less program required to run those programs. What we're seeing here is based on what the cost of running the programs will be to the, to the reimbursement rates for each of those programs in terms of our, our recreation revenue. So we're expecting that overall, when we get done with all of our recreation programs, there would be about a $9,000 increase in property taxes required to support all of the different programs. And yet we'll see a $22,000 increase in the programs revenue that's, that's created. The unassigned fund balance, I've talked about it twice already. What we're attempting to do is to use only $800,000 on unassigned fund balance, $200,000 less. The chart on page 15 shows that the fund balance as of June of 2012 was $9,606,000 or 13.1%. We're expecting during the 12-13 year to have a $1.1 million surplus. We would forward $800,000 to the 13-14 year. We would end up with a fund balance of approximately $9.9 million or 13.3%, 3%. Again, if the $288,000 does not materialize on the new revenue projected in the governor's budget, we may be required before the council adopts on May, on, on the 29th of April to revisit this item on whether or not that 800 stays at 800 or whether it goes higher. In 2011, the town council adopted a fund balance policy and they reviewed the best practices memorandum on appropriate level of unrestricted fund balance, which was put out by the Government Finance Officers Association. GFOA recommends a minimum that general purpose governments recognize regardless of size, maintain unrestricted fund balances of two months, which is 16.67% of the operating budget. For us to be able to end up with a 16.67% of our general fund budget, we would have a fund balance of $12.4 million. So at this point, we're targeting 9.8 million and we'd still be $2 million below what the target number would be at the 16.67%. I'm comfortable being at that $10 million range. Also, once investment rates go back up, the availability of those funds for management will generate investment income that will offset property tax needs in future years. So we need to balance a number of different items when we look at that, that revenue stream. But I think that the use of the $800,000 down from the, the million is appropriate based on what the concerns are on the tenuousness of the state budget. Moving on, we move into the expenditure program. If there are any questions on the, on any questions on any of the revenues, we'll go on to the expenditure statement. The expenditure statement starts on page 17 and shows six different elements. The operating program, capital budget, debt service, the transfers to the utilities as well as to the schools and seniors. When we look at the operating program, the operating program itself at 20.6 million is up $455,000. A lion's share of that is in the public safety area, almost $200,000 of the $455,000 is associated with either the police or EMS or our animal control programs. The last major chunk is in the employment services. Employment services increases are directly related, for the most part, for the retirement cost for us to continue to meet our annual required contribution. As you can see, the debt service is down $370,000 net. Capital improvements are up and the schools, as I mentioned earlier, would be at 1.6% or Walking through the operating program, I note that within the operating program, we're, we're up to 2.26%. Of that $101,000 is directly related to social security, retirement and healthcare, and we'll look at those in specific detail as we walk through the, the remainder of the message. Staffing-wise, we're not recommending any change in staffing, we're staying at 166.95 positions. There still is about 11.8 positions below where we were over the past five years. Several of those are in public services and the rest are in public safety and one is in GIS. The general municipal program, for our newcomers, the program, we work with five different labor groups. IBPO for the police department with 52 sworn members. EMS has got 16 members with International Association of Firefighters. Public Works, Animal Control and Police Dispatch with Council 94. There's approximately 44 members in that organization. And then the NEA, which is General Office Staff, supports for about 49 or 50. And then the remainder is in supervisory personnel that are non-organized. Contracts are in place for EMS and Public Works. We are currently in negotiation with NEA. Their contract expired last June 30th. We are getting closer to a completion of a three-year contract with that group. With the police last year, we extended their contract one year. Their current contract expires June 30th of 2013, this year. We have had notice to commence negotiations and we'll be starting that within the next couple of weeks. So at this point, what we've done with all salary increases, I forecast in the 13-14 year at 2% across all of our units. EMS has agreed to that. Public Works has agreed to it. We're still working with the NEA managerial and supervisory staff is budgeted to 2% and the police were budgeted at zero for the current year. So we're expecting that in the 2013-14 year, since they received no increase, that they will be looking for a minimum of the 2%. And that's been factored into, into consideration in the development of the budget. The general municipal program, as, as highlighted on page 19, shows a 203,000 or 1.9% increase in the personnel program. And when you look across the lines, there's a 2.1% increase in full-time salaries and about a $30,000, $34,000 increase, decrease in seasonals. That decrease in the seasonals is because there'll be no, no elections next year, so the canvassing authority will be down about $28,000 or $29,000 because we're not going to be paying for the conduct of, of the two elections that we have in the current- paying for the conduct of the two elections that we had in the current year, both the presidential preference and the general election in November. So, that's where we're saving there. There's also a minimal increase in the longevity, and that's because we had some high longevity earners that left employed during the 2012-2013 year. And we're also seeing less projected retirements, so there's less money budgeted for severance pays in the 2013 fourteen year. Jumping on to page twenty, page twenty breaks out the personnel program in a couple of different ways. One, it shows where the salaries are for each of the different groups, full-time, seasonals, overtime, and longevity. And it also shows what the benefits are associated only with the full-time employees. There's additional costs associated with retirement for part-time individuals, as well as dental and health for part-time. This is only to look at the full-time, because what we're looking to do with this chart is to determine what is the value of benefits as a percentage of the salary. And what you can see here is that the average cost of benefits is projected at $22,300 per full-time job or 41.8%. So, for every dollar you pay in salary, you're paying another 41.8 cents in salary that is associated with benefits. Benefits we talk about would be, you know, FICA, retirement, healthcare, dental care, life insurance, all of those different values. And when we look at the personnel and the employment programs, that works out to be about $14.8 million out of the $20.6 million. So, when you look at your budget, your operating budget of $20.6 million, almost 72 cents of every dollar is going to be able to deal with your personnel program. So, obviously, the operating program for the town, and it would be the same for any service providing organization, is substantially made up of what the cost is for personnel program and benefits. When we look at benefits, there's a chart that's presented on page twenty that shows you what the longevity is for the different labor groups. As you can see, those that have binding arbitration capabilities have a much higher longevity value associated with them. When you look at the $114.40 per year of service, that means that somebody with 20 years would have a longevity payment of $2288. When we look at average salary, that means that persons receiving the $114 per year, with a 20-year person is getting 4% of, a 4% increase in wage, as opposed to the police officers, that would be up at 10%. So, longevity is an important and costly component of our personnel program. For the 13 fourteen year, longevity will be worth about $340,000. $150,000 of that through municipal employees, and the remainder, $185,000, I'm sorry, $149, $150,000 with the police, and the remainder, $185,000 with the general municipal employees. When we look at the retirement system, persons that retire are entitled to receive a value at 75% of their sick leave, accumulated sick leave, as well as full payment on anything that's left in their vacation or personal times. On an annual basis, we have to calculate what the liability is that's associated with if everybody were to retire on the same day, June 30th of 2013. The value as of June 30th of 2012, if everybody were to retire and we paid everybody off based on what their accrued days were, would have cost $1.9 million. We have in the reserve fund, $1.238 million. So, the unfunded liability is only $706,000. So, you've got 60, almost 64% of the total compensated absence is reserved in your fund balance. Most towns go on a pay-as-you-go basis and do not have any of this money set aside. As far as the employee healthcare program, currently, employees are paying 15%. For the 2013 fourteen year, we're looking at increases up to 17.5% for each of the labor groups, either those that have completed negotiations or those that are currently in negotiation. For any of the individuals in the EMS or police that were hired after 2002, they're already at the 20% rate. We're forecasting that the contribution to the healthcare reserve fund will be only $616 more than current year. So, we're looking at a budgeted amount of $3,44,545. When you add that to what the school department puts out, the schools are putting out $5.8 million. You've got about $8,843,000 that goes into the healthcare reserve fund for the 2013 When we look at the healthcare reserve fund, which is shown on page twenty-two, we're looking at what's the cost for active employees, what's the cost for retired employees. When you see the retirees, the retirees is a combination of both the direct pay for those that are collecting a healthcare benefit in retirement, plus what the benefit will be for future people that are accruing seniority at this point to be able to have paid healthcare in retirement. The OPEB requirements or the annual required contributions for next year is at $794,000. Of that amount, of that amount, $516,000 is on direct pay. That's the money we're paying out directly for the employees that are retired, that are in our healthcare system today. The 278 is the implied subsidy that's required and money to be set aside for current employees for the next year of time that they're earning toward paid healthcare in retirement. So, we're making the full cost of our ARC. We've also got $8,000 in for OPEB, which is for the actuarial study that'll be completed in the 2013 fourteen year. So, you've got full payment on your healthcare plan, as well as full payment on the OPEB requirements for your healthcare plan, as well as the other costs, whether it's the stop-loss insurance, the administrative fees. In Rhode Island, police and fire do not go through the workers' comp system. Because they don't go through workers' comp, we have to have direct pay for any services rendered, medical services rendered for somebody injured in the line of duty. The projected cost on that next year is about $84,600. Stop-loss insurance, because we are a self-insured entity, is necessary. The town pays the first, how much is it? First $225,000 for a person's healthcare cost in a given year. Anything in excess of that would be paid for through the reinsurance. So, that costs is around $45,000. So, overall, $3,44,545 will go in to the healthcare reserve fund. Right now, the healthcare reserve fund has two components, one school and one town. The unrestricted fund balance at this point is $3 million in, $3,22,000 in town funds and 3.3 million in school funds, for a total of $6.3 million that can be used if we had severe years on a cost-plus basis where our expenditures were much higher than the budgeted amounts. So, you've got a full cushion that's available there to be able to address any type of self-insurance that's necessary for healthcare. When we look at the state retirement system contributions, again, all of our employees are in the state retirement program, the MERS, which is the municipal employees retirement system. It is as a condition of employment. Last year, or two years ago, in November of 2011, the General Assembly made substantial revisions in the MERS system as a means of adjusting and reducing what the unfunded liability was. I'm not going to go through in detail, but page twenty-three gives a summary of the revisions that were made based in 2011 revisions. Anything from the loss of the COLA to a reduction in earnings from 2% per year, down to 1% for police and fire. Anybody with under age 45 and less than 10 years of service required to work till 55, even though they would have a full 25 years in the system. And if they're over 45, that they'd have to work till 52. These were all major changes as a means of reducing the unfunded liability associated with these different funds. When we look at the retirement contribution rates, they're at the bottom of page twenty-three. You can see that we've got about a 0.23% increase on the police, 1.42% on EMS, and a 0.34% on the municipals. Overall, our contribution increase will go up to, up by $77,777. The most important thing in looking at the retirement program, and again, under the MERS system, our retirement systems are independent. They're managed by the state, but they are solely owned by South Kingston, both on the assets and the liabilities. So, when you look at page M24, what you'll see is that on the most recent actuarial update, the police retirement system had $20,500,000 in assets, but it had $25.8 million in liability. So, the net unfunded liability was $5.3 million. So, it was at 79.5%. EMS, with the same analysis, is overfunded. It has $450,000 more than it will need to close out that program. And on the municipal, and the municipal is not just town employees, it's also school employees that are outside of the teacher retirement system. There, there's about a $6 million unfunded liability. So, overall, you've got $79.36 million in liabilities, you've got $68.5 million. So, you're down to 86.3%. So, 86.3 cents of every dollar is in your funds available. That is down from the 89% in the prior year, and that's because there were greater outgoings, outgoing of dollars that had been anticipated by the retirement system when they did the last update on June 30th of 2011. And secondly, because the investment yields did not accomplish the 7.5% blended rate of earnings over the last five years. So, because of those two components, the value of the payouts and the value of the investment income, we saw an erosion of the asset value and the amount of unfunded liability increased by about almost 3%. We're still in much better shape. Many municipalities that have private retirement systems may have funding ratios, some as low as in the twenties. Those are the ones that are in critical states that have to be able to either reduce benefits or reduce the liabilities associated with those systems because they're unsustainable. That was what the governor's budget proposal was as far as the revenue source was concerned, where we would pick up to 288. They were looking at those communities that were really woefully underfunded as at least giving them some source of revenue to be able to get them closer to meeting the ARC requirements. If there's no questions, I'll move on to municipal insurance. Here, the chart just simply shows you that...
Steve, Jim has a question.
Can you simply, short conversation with all of our employee groups, just talk about how the town, how long a period of time the town carries them for health insurance when they retire? Is COBRA in there or concurrent, or where does it stand on that? Where does Medicare kick in?
The, when you look at the municipal employee base, the EMS and police have healthcare through age 65, so it's before Medicare would kick in.
No matter when they retire?
That's correct.
Okay.
So, if they were to retire at age 60, they'd have five years. If they went at 55, they'd have 10 years that they would get.
And then Medicare is the stopping point, so that's automatic?
At this point, well, no, our contract stops at age 65. Many municipalities have healthcare for life for their employees. We do not. So, ours is for the police and fire would be any age up till age 65, they would be able to collect it.
Can, well, can any of those employees refuse Medicare? Do we have a COBRA contribution?
Medicare isn't available till age 65.
Right. But I mean, can, for whatever reason?
If they have a similar coverage, if their spouse has a similar coverage, then they're not allowed to take it. Or what we'll do is, we've had a couple of police officers recently who have been hired in other positions, and what we've done, we've got them off the healthcare, and we're just paying their cost share, which is a lot less than what the cost of the health plan is.
All right, Steve, you mentioned there's a third group, the third group?
Council 94 had healthcare through age 65, and that was negotiated out of the contract for anybody hired, I believe it was 2002. 2002. So, any employees after 2002 get a stipend. The stipend that's provided is...
It graduates from $1,500, depending upon the years of service. So, it starts at 20 years, you get a stipend for three years, and then it goes to 25 years, it's four years, and it gets $2,000. And it goes up to 30 years, and it's around $3,000 or $4,000.
Suffice it to say that with the non-organized and the NEA, the stipend is very, very limited compared to what's being provided with the police and EMS. So, we've got a very limited liability, other than where you've got binding arbitration as far as healthcare and retirement. When you go to the school side, the schools have got five years of healthcare in retirement, Jim, and I don't believe there is any requirement for them to switch over to Medicare.
No, theirs goes to age 70 is the max that can be. Yeah, or five years.
Five years or to age 70.
Whichever is less.
There's a discussion when we meet with the school committee then.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, if we don't have any other questions on the healthcare or the retirement, that would bring us up to the capital budget, which council approved with the 232. I'm not sure we need to talk about that tonight. Debt service is presented on page M25. The chart is important because we're reducing the debt payment by $366,000. But when you look at the revenues change, there's a loss of $203,000. So, the net property tax requirement is, we're really only paying less in taxes by $163,000. But again, all of those other sources of revenue are a major assistance, too. The state construction aid, which is construction aid for the schools, is down to $710,000. It's not that we're losing anything, it's just that the amount of debt is down, so the debt service requirements are down. Again, as I mentioned, the energy saving program, where we used to have $48,000, we're not getting that anymore, so we're seeing a loss of $48,000 there. Those are the two major sources of less revenue. Those are the two major sources of less revenue coming in to pay down debt. So you've got a $366,000 gross debt reduction, but as far as the property taxes that are necessary for it, it's only $163,000 in savings. The, the next items are dealing with the utilities. We'll deal with those tomorrow night. And each, just running through it quick, as far as the water fund is concerned, there's no rate increases for water, there's no rate increases recommended for wastewater, and there's no increases that are recommended for the, for the program with the transfer station. We're looking at steady state with all of the fees associated with all three of our utilities. When we look at the seniors program, and we're not going to spend any time on that tonight, we'll do that when we do leisure services tomorrow evening, we're looking at a program increase of about $30,000 as far as the overall program is concerned. That's a little bit higher than most of our programs, but the cost associated with the adult daycare program is higher because we've had to increase staff requirements there. We'll talk about that tomorrow evening. That gets us through to the transfer to the schools, which will be the week, or the following week. Again, what we're looking at here is that as far as the school, the unassigned fund balance, which is shown on page 29, is, as of June 30 of 2012, the unassigned fund balance was $1,916,000. They're looking to commit $535,000 in the fund balance. They're predicting a surplus for the year of $365,000. Allen's predicted it up well over $700,000. So we figure that there will be a fund balance as of June 30 of 2013 of around $2 million. We have recommended a reduction of $200,000 from what was requested by the schools. That recommendation is based on being able to reduce by $200,000 their contribution to the healthcare reserve fund. The revenue statement that's been presented by the, by the school department, I have made some revisions in. The, I spent some time looking at the state aid formula because I wanted to make sure that I was comfortable with how the revenues were set there. What I did find is that the money that will come in from group home aid is down about 60, will be down about $60,000. The, the real loss is, with the implementation of the formula, is about $300,000 next year. And there is some good news with that because essentially what, what we're seeing is that while we were at 16.8% as a funded ratio for schools last year, it's up to about 17.5%. And I spent some time on the school budget going over that. The state, what they did is, they've got a core instruction cost this year of $8,897, and that's up from $8,679 in the current year. And they're forecasting 3,419 students, which is how they come up with the revenue estimate. I think the revenue estimate will be less than that, not sizably, but it probably will be below that because they won't establish what the number of students are that are included in the formula until they get to April, April 15, when they do a student enrollment classroom review. And those will be the numbers that they use for the 13, 14 year. When I did the calc, when you consider it, the state's giving us approximately $1,557 per student under the formula next year. And about $623 for the children on a reduced lunch program. And what their projection is that if we were getting just what the formula allowed with that $1,557, that we would be getting $2.4 million less than what they've budgeted. So you take the $2.4 million and you divide it by eight, and you come up with the $300,000 reduction that they took next year. Because technically what they're saying is that over the next eight years, they'll reduce by $300,000 a year, so that in eight years, you'll be down to getting what you're entitled to under the formula. So they're still claiming that South Kingston's receiving about $2.4 million more than they're entitled to under the formula. And I can go into any level of detail if you want, because the numbers that the state has given and that the school committee has used are accurate, are accurate based on us not knowing exactly what the number of students will be that'll be used, or what the number of students on reduced or free lunch will be when those are calculated in. Because you're talking about a difference of, you know, $1,500 to $2,000 per student, even if you had a loss of, of 20 students, you wouldn't be having a sizable loss of more than $40,000 in the aid. So it's something that we'll have to watch, and we should be watching each and every year. But the, the aid numbers are relatively accurate that have been, been forecast here. And we'll talk with the school committee on that on the, is it 13th, I think it is, or the 18th?
Yeah, Wednesday.
Jim?
Steve, I know we'll spend more time on this next week, but projected surplus, we're at $703,000, the town estimate, $365 for the school. How much of that is permanent savings, a reduction of the old structural deficit problems? And if it is permanent, why isn't it permanent in the budgets moving forward?
Well, there's nothing dealing here with, with deficit reductions with the school fund, Jim, I'm, I'm not sure. I mean, what we've looked at with the school budget is what each of the line items that they would need based on the budget that they put out. It didn't have anything to do with, with overfunding in prior years. Overfunding in prior years goes into fund balance. So you're seeing any monies that were not expended are sitting there in the undesignated fund balance.
Are those from personnel, the reduction in personnel? I mean, where is this surplus coming from?
It's, it's based on the trends of where they were last year at this time, where they were the year before, and then just projecting out through June 30. I think John, John's is a worst case scenario, mine's probably a best case scenario. Where we're going to end up, probably somewhere in the middle.
I think the key here is that you still have approximately the, between 1.75 and $2 million. One of the things I'd like to see is that the schools need to do the building analysis as to the envelope and the structural improvements that may be necessary on all of their buildings. We talked to them during the capital budget and said we'd like to see that done during the 12, 13 year, so it would be available when we put the 14, 15 year capital budget together. What I'd like to see them being able to do is to set aside dollars from the fund balance, not just to contribute to future years, but to pay down what bonding would be necessary in the future. So that you may be able to take where we've estimated that we would need $1 million in bonding in the 14, 15 year, instead of floating bonds, which would then have probably almost $1 million in interest costs associated with it to pay back, is to use a portion of the fund balance to be able to pay those, pay those costs. Because those, we, we need to keep an unassigned fund balance in the area of probably around $1 million there, because they're going to need $535,000 just as a base revenue. But the amounts above that could be committed toward building improvements, and we could, again, even further reduce what future debt requirements would be for the community.
Is it fair to say that the education funding formula was really based upon student population and breaking down student population, those who, who need the lunch programs and not? Is that a fair analysis, or is it broken down even further than that?
No, the, the, the real breakdown with the education formula is coming up with a core cost per student, and that, that core cost this year was set at the $8,897. I'm not sure you're going to find a lot of school districts that are going to pay for the costs of education at $8,800, but that's for the core without any of the added services that are out there. And what the state is claiming is that they should be paying based on what that core dollar amount is, and then on a proportionality on, based on the, the wealth of a community to pay. So where South Kingston would have a 17.5% share of that $8,897, a community like One Socket may be at 90%. So for every student, they would get 90% of that 88, where you're only getting 17.5% of the $1,557. That's how the formula was set up. What they couldn't do with the formula is to set everybody at those rates in the first year. So what they did was they said for those communities that are getting more than they're entitled to under the formula, over the next 10 years, we'll take the money away from them. And each and every year, what they do is they calculate what you're entitled to, to what you're actually getting net of 1/8, or next year, 1/7 of the difference between those two numbers. So if, you know, the formula is there, and it is going to be directly related to the students. So as I say, if the 3,419 students that they had in the current year become 3,390 students next year, then the fact, they're factoring that 25 students less times that $1,559, where you would see a reduction. So there is, there is going to be components of the formula that, when the governor puts his budget together, he's not aware of, and that we would not, we would only be able to estimate at this point.
Carol?
Steve, you're recommending that they reduce their, their request for an increase by 200,000. Do you have recommendations on how they might do that?
Yes, as I noted in the, in the, in the message here, it's a $200,000 reduction in the contribution level that they need for healthcare. When Allen did the reviews as to what they would need to contribute into the healthcare reserve, his number is $200,000 below what the number was that they were using. Some of that is that John's putting his estimate together based on actual expenses for the healthcare system through November. We're looking at it through the end of January, that's a piece of it. Also, I think that we may have a better handle on how the, the numbers move, and I trust Allen's numbers as, as being accurate. So I have no problems recommending the $200,000 adjustment.
I just, I just have a quick question about the figure that you gave for the 8,897, and I did read and see that that was inclusive of the charter schools. Does that take into consideration all of the other expenses in terms of transportation and those issues that were addressed, or?
This core, the, the core dollar amount is based on several factors that are education expenses. Charter schools are considered in the same way as...
Okay.
...our schools are. So they're, they're going to be based on that, their, their share is going to be based on the same, same dollar amounts.
Okay, that's what I wanted to...
But I don't think transportation is included, which is a big cost in South Kingston based on the area.
It's not part of the core cost.
All right, so that's addressed totally separately in some other line item that were?
Our town would have to pay those costs associated with the transportation.
Okay.
They're not considered as part of the state's core costs.
Okay.
So urban areas usually have less of a cost associated with transportation because they don't have a big of an area.
Right.
But transportation is one of the bigger items that's not included in that core cost. What I can do is, before the next, with the meeting with the schools, is I'll get a breakdown as to how they come up with the $8,897, show you what's in it and what's not.
Thank you.
Jim?
Steve, lastly, I'm just looking at the superintendent's short form budget she gave us with, do all your numbers include the stipend, the salary and benefit increase in this first year of the contract coming up?
We use the numbers that they had for personnel. We did not adjust those, those were provided to us. We did not adjust the, the personnel salary amounts that, that she had listed.
For the life of me, I just...
But supposedly they are all built into what the school committee's budget includes.
Oh, yes. The numbers that they gave us are net of the reductions that, that she put out to the school committee.
And it also includes the, her first year budget reductions of $1,700,000 she was talking about? That, that's also in the budget in your numbers? She says $1,685,000 for first year budget reductions.
Yeah, all the, again, it was all net, and the school committee budget does reflect the reductions, the 30 full-time equivalent positions that they made are included in there.
For the life of me, I don't come up with those numbers, but I just, I mean, I'm really concerned here that, that we gave them 2% on the table when we should be looking at zero here. The stipend increases versus all the reductions in the programs here, and even adding back in step, some healthcare, so on and so forth, it looks like it'd be pretty close to a flat, maybe an increase of $100, $200,000. But we set the table by giving them, if you will, a 2% umbrella to go up to. But I, I just can't come up with those numbers for the life of me.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion when the school committee's here. At this point, as I said, what we've simply done is to make one, one reduction of 200,000 from what had been presented to us. The information that was presented to us was that all the reductions that she had presented to the school committee were adjusted out of that budget. Okay, if there's no other questions, what, what we would do at this point is to move The next section will be each of the individual accounts. The tab that's entitled general fund narrative and the tab that's entitled general fund. The general fund tab gives you the, the numbers breakdown for each of the different object codes that make up the charter accounts. The narrative gives you an explanation from the department director's perspective as to what is in their budget, or why it's in the budget, or what they hope to accomplish over the, over the next year. I think the easiest way of looking at this is, if you want, take out of the ring binder the numbers, pages GF1 through 22. Take those out of the budget, and then follow along with the narrative on page N1. Either that, or I'll put the narrative up on the board and you stay with the numbers itself, whichever is easier for you. The, the first account is the town council's account. The town council's account is up about 5.2%, and the, it's made up really of only a, a couple of items. One is the stipends for the council, $2,000 for each of the council members, $3,000 for the council president, that's the first $11,000. The remainder of the dollars is monies that are spent to have people like Billy Forbes standing behind the counter for each of your, your various meetings, or with the office supplies that are necessary for the council. So the overall cost is $14,050. If there's no questions, we'll move on to budget adoption. Budget adoption is up 0.7%. We must budget on an annual basis... We must budget on an annual basis in anticipation that a voter referendum may be required in, in each of the budget years. Right now, the council's process is, through the charter, requires that on before March twenty-second, a preliminary budget's adopted. During the month of April, we have two formal public hearings on the ninth and the tenth. They're scheduled this year. Then we would have petitions to the warrant by the twenty-second of April, and the council would adopt a final budget on the twenty-ninth of April. If there's a demand for a referendum with the necessary signatures, that referendum would be conducted on June fourth of this year. If the referendum's required, we would need the ten-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-nine dollars that's budgeted in this account to be able to pay for that election. Because we would need the machine programming and the printing of the ballots, as well as the poll books, for that referendum to be conducted. Obviously, if there's no referendum that's demanded, and none's conducted, the ten-thousand dollars goes back to fund balance. If there's no questions, we'll move on to municipal legal services. Municipal legal services, the chart on page N-two shows you what the projected cost will be. We're anticipating retainers of a hundred-and-sixty-seven-thousand dollars in the two thousand thirteen-fourteen year, as well as out-of-pocket and court expenses of about forty-two-hundred dollars. Total budget recommendation is a hundred-and-seventy-one-thousand-two-hundred, two-hundred dollars. We're estimating about eleven-hundred hours of legal services that'll be conducted for the town. The cost associated with, with general services and planning and zoning is forecasted around a hundred-and-seventy-five dollars an hour, and in total, about seven-hundred-and-fifty hours. And prosecution hours, about three-hundred-and-fifty-four hours, at thirty-two thousand dollars in retainer. This is an increase of thirty-two-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars over the current year. If there's no questions, we'll move on to probate court. Probate court in the amount of four thousand dollars, the same amount as prior year. Dale notes in the narrative that in the last year, there were twelve regular sessions and four special sessions held at the court, and that there's been a hundred-and-forty-two states that are open, of which twenty were wills filed for record only, and sixteen that were for guardianships. Moving on, Town Clerk's Office. Town Clerk's Office, we're looking at about a three-point-six percent increase, or nine-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. The narrative on pages N-three and four provide a explanation as to the functional areas that the Town Clerk's Office is responsible for with land, land evidence, town council records, the border canvassing, vital statistics, probate court, and business licenses. If there's no questions, move on. Next item is the Public Information. Public Information is a recommendation for funding in the amount of thirty five-thousand-one-hundred-and-eighty dollars. This is made up of several sources. One is the Everbridge system. Everbridge is the reverse nine-one-one system that we use to put out emergency messages to the community. It was used extensively during both the hurricane and during the most recent blizzard. It is a very important component of our emergency notification system in getting crucial information out to the public. That's at nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty. Actually, it's about ninety-six-hundred dollars on the retainer, and about a hundred-and-fifty dollars that we use to advertise to get more people to get their phone numbers in. We have also included twenty-thousand, twenty-one thousand dollars for the first time. The twenty-one thousand dollars is really based at the request of the town council, so that it could be deliberated. And this would be to provide live television. And this would be a one-time cost of ten-thousand-eight to bring the equipment in, and an additional ten-thousand-two-hundred dollars annually to be able to maintain the services, so that the council meeting would be carried live on cable television, rather than with a twenty-four-hour delay. Again, through clerk base, we have live streaming available, but it will, it does not provide for the cable. So if you want cable service for the two thousand thirteen-fourteen year, the budget needs to be increased by twenty-one thousand dollars. If you do not want that service, that, that money can be cut out of the budget. Council asked me to put it into the budget. I have included it for council consideration.
Any comments here on that?
I just, you know, this was before my time, but I'm just thinking it's on. You can, you can stream it on web, and you can see it the next day. I don't see what the, the real need is. I mean, you can get it, you can get it live. I mean, why do you have to, what do we have to spend twenty-one thousand, that's ten thousand dollars, yet going forward? For something that's already there.
It's live on a computer, but it's not live on the television, is what has been brought to the town council meetings.
But it is, it is rebroadcast again the next day.
Right.
I mean, are people going to, you know, jump out of their chairs at home and run down here? I'm just curious, I'm just curious what the reasoning behind it is. I mean, it is available, I mean, and pretty much, I mean, some people don't have computers. I, I'll, I'll agree to that, but I think the vast majority of people do, and if they are interested, they can see it on television the next day. Or they can, they can come sit in the audience. You know, they can get the information, so that's just my, my two cents.
I appreciate your comments.
My only question was, because I don't know, do we have any statistical data to see how many people took advantage of the opportunity to watch it live on TV to base this expenditure on?
We're not part of the Nelson ratings. Just missed.
I'm just trying.
Jim?
Or maybe, you know, go back to my carrot approach. Why not ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five-dollar credit off property taxes? Take that ten thousand dollars and see if we can get some folks here in the audience and get brave, come up to the microphone. You know, this is not fun to have an empty audience of the public out there. You know, we, you're obviously not perfect, but I, I just can't believe they're not issues to be discussed. I certainly get phone calls and strange emails. I really wish we could have those folks here in the audience. But if they're, I'd be happy to offer a dollar credit amount off property taxes, just to get some audience here.
I just, I just realized, I'm reading, rereading the language. It says leased either on Cox or Verizon. Now, if you, if you put it on Verizon, I don't have Verizon. Or if you put it on Cox, some people don't have Cox. So you're still eliminating people.
Dale?
Oh, the other one? Okay, it just doesn't, doesn't say that in here.
Just using one as a vendor to, to put the service on.
Put the service on, let's put it on, okay.
Good clarification, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no questions, we'll move on to canvassing authority. This is an account that we love one year and hate the next year, because it goes up and it goes down. As you can see, with the canvassing authority, last year's budget was about seventy-eight thousand dollars. It's down to forty-two thousand dollars for the year. For the most part, budget pays for one personnel, one person within that office that is the canvassing, canvassing responsibilities for the office. If there's no questions, we'll move on to Town Manager's Office. Manager's Office is looking at about a twelve-thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-dollar increase. Much of that is in the personnel account. If you recall, there was an upgrade on one of the positions within that office last year. That was unbudgeted, and this year, we've got full funding associated with that. The budget is representative of three, three persons plus a part-time secretarial assistants. Overall, it's a three-point-nine percent increase over the current year. The next account for Personnel Administration. Personnel Administration, we're looking at an increase of two-point-two percent. One person employed, Personnel Director is resident to that office. Dollars are spent here to monitor and update our personnel system. This office is going to be extremely busy this year with the Human Resource Management System, this software that will be introduced. We would hope to have that system go live as of January one of two thousand and fourteen. So there's a great deal of prep and training work that's going to be necessary for that, for that system to go live in January. And she'll continue to have to coordinate all of the employee performance of praise assistance, as well as hiring of new employees. If we move on, League of Cities and Towns. There's, I think this is the thirteenth or the fourteenth year that the funds have stayed at eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. The League provides valuable services in terms of lobby efforts, and also in providing notification as to various pieces of legislation that have been introduced, provides for coordination with municipalities to be able to either provide support or opposition to specific pieces of legislation. They also collect and disseminate that information, so that when people go up to testify, they've got good information to present. Town Hall Operation. Town Hall Operation, we're looking at a point-eight-nine percent increase. It's about fourteen-hundred-and-thirty dollars over the current year. We're hopeful that the cost on heating this building will be down now that the natural gas has been installed. We've downed our estimate by about five thousand dollars from what oil was costing us with the older system. I will mention that we are continuing to move forward with putting out to bid the purchase of a generator for this building. What we found both during the, what we found during the hurricane was that we ended up having this building closed for about four days. It's four days of full-time work that we, we lost, yet we paid for. It also provided a great deal of difficulty in terms of being able to access data within the, within our networks. We've got to get that replaced. As I said, during capital budget development, funds are available within the Reserve Fund for Town Hall. That generator hopefully is going to be installed this summer. The Finance Department, for the two thousand and thirteen-fourteen year, we're looking at an increase of two-point-four percent, or eleven-thousand-three-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars. There's a full explanation of all of the things that finance is involved with, as well as the number of funds that it's responsible for, maintenance and, and operation, as well as the debt program. Alan points out in the narrative about savings during the year of four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in the refi on the prior debt that we had. That's responsible for about eighty-seven thousand dollars in reduced tax needs for the two thousand thirteen-fourteen year. And it'll also, in two thousand fifteen-sixteen, save us around three-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. So those savings will continue based on the, the work that was done by the Finance Director and his staff. He also points out the other responsibilities that he's managing. Trust funds with both the school trustees, Hazard, Irving Knowles, all of the different funds that come through his office. He's also responsible for the OPEB, and will be the principal as far as the implementation of the Financial Management Information System that will be put in over the next eighteen months, as well as payroll. There's good explanations here as far as the levels of tax collection being at ninety-nine-point-five percent. Again, the financial management systems that we expect to have timely implementation on. If there's no questions, I'll move on to the Tax Assessor.
Steve, Steve, could I just backtrack with a question? The League of Cities and Towns, the eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifteen, is that based on population?
It was based on population going back thirteen years ago. Since our population grew faster than the states, we're still, we're underpaying at this point, if it went on the two thousand and ten census.
And the updates with the work that's happening at the General Assembly, do you get that through emails or phone calls with the good work that they're doing?
A combination of both. They put out on a, on a timely basis a listing of all municipal bills. And in fact, I just got that late last week for the first, the, the first presentation on that. That information's available. We also get timely phone calls if, in fact, there's hearings that have been scheduled with the different committees at the State House.
I know that's valuable information for you, thank you.
Tax Assessor's Office, as we, everyone's aware, we're going through the revale at this point. The revale will be completed. Hopefully, we'll have the values out next week. We'll have some firm numbers available for the certification on June fifteenth. And again, I'm forecasting at this point, down from eight, probably in the six, six percent range as far as the reduction in, in losses. It's unfortunate, I think, hopefully, that why, if we were doing the revaluation a year later, I doubt that we would be seeing even a six percent loss. Starting to see an increase in the market again, particularly over the last, the last couple of months. But this revale will be as of December thirty-one of two thousand and twelve. The assesses' cost is up one-point-seven percent, most of that is due to the personnel program. Gene does note in there what the values of the different exemptions are that we provide, as well as what the probation values have been over the past several years. The Assessment Board of Review is the next account with the Assessment Board of Review. They, here appeals, people that feel that the values established by the revale company and confirmed by the assessor are not in keeping with market value. We're forecasting a expenditure of around nineteen hundred dollars, thirteen hundred more than the current year. This is to reimburse the transportation tool from different sites that they visit as a part of their, their process in reviewing the appeals that come before them. Next office is the Information Technology or Data Processing. And again, this office has got two full-time positions associated with it. It's responsible for the network, as well as all of the physical servers that we have. And the, right now, we're managing over a hundred personal computers, twenty-five printers and twelve routers and switches within our network. And we're also at multiple locations. This office will also be principally responsible for working with the Finance Department and the Personnel Office for the implementation of the financial management systems. Right now, we're with one employee there. The second position, we hope to be hiring within the next, next two months. We waited on that position, we've kept it open for about the last year, until we saw what type of software we were going to buy, so we would be able to hire somebody that had the greatest experience and could service the best of our needs going forward in terms of the new financial management systems. The Geographic Information Systems, Council's well familiar with, is GIS systems for all of our mapping. On a yearly basis, it's become more and more important to us in terms of dealing with planning functions. It's also been critically important to us in dealing with the mattoonic issues, and dealing with high-flood danger zones and the emergency mapping that's necessary in terms of storm management for the community. The online capabilities have been broadened over the past year, and the public has twenty-four-seven use of the system at this point. use of the system at this point. We'll continue to enhance that system as we go forward and make it more user-friendly. The next item is the post-audit report. Here we show with the post-audit what the overall cost of the audit is for the general fund next year. There's no change. It's $24,250, its estimated. $48,000 will be spent for the entire audit. We are now in the, this will be the second year when we do the audit of the 12-13 year. It'll be the second year of a four-year engagement with Blunt Superior out of Connecticut. They were hired last year. They also, a different division within the company also acted as the consultant of record and will continue to act as the consultant of record on the implementation of the governmental financial information system. Moving on to the planning department. The planning department, as usual, has the longest narrative explanation goes on for our, I, we cut it down from 20 pages to the three pages that you have here.
Thank you.
The overall budget's up 2% over the current year. There's no real changes that are anticipated in terms of the program requirements. Planning department is involved with almost every project that goes on, whether they're in the public services area. There's a lot of specialty work that's done. There's obviously some stuff work on various projects as well as providing staff liaison services for economic development, affordable housing, and the planning board and historical preservation. Planning board.
Steve, excuse me, what are we paying the planning board members now?
The, the planning board gets paid $20 per meeting attended, and we forecast 30 meetings that they would have over the course of the year. So it would be about, if, for the full cost would be around $4,500. Normally, we don't even see requests for reimbursement of that dollar amount, but it would be up to $20 per meeting, Jim.
Has there been any conversation about increasing their pay?
I know that.
They certainly put in the hours.
I may know that there was some discussion here with possibly increasing their, their meeting stipend from $20 up. Is there any further conversation?
Well, the zoning board.
So I think it's off.
Zoning board is the same thing, isn't it? $20.
Yes.
So we'd have to do it for both if we were going to consider that. What do most?
What you're comfortable with?
What do most cities and towns play, pay their zoning and planning boards? Do you have any idea?
I, I don't have that information. We could try to collect that for like-sized communities.
Yeah, just see how, where we fall in the price range.
All right, we can, we'll try to collect that information and have it before you adopt the preliminary budget.
Thank you.
Yeah, it takes us through the planning department, it takes us up, up to the zoning board of review. Again, as you mentioned, $20 per, premier, per meeting. The total funding on the zoning board is about $11,900. A good, a good deal of this is directly related to the stenographer services that are required for that, that board. The payout for salaries or the stipends for the board members is, is on the same par as that with the planning board. The zoning and building inspection, the, in the 2011-12 year, the department issued 815 residential building permits and generated about $315,000 in income. It's important to note that the income that's generated, many times we've got people looking at it saying, why are you generating more than what it costs you to operate that department? It's important to note that while we've got a budget of $239,000, that doesn't include any of the overhead associated with the administration of the program, nor does it include any of the personnel costs. All of our healthcare costs associated with the personnel there, like our retirement, are budgeted as separate. So when you look at what the real cost would be to run that department, it would be in line with the revenues that we generate on an annual basis. It's important to note that in addition to the building inspection itself, we're also required to deal with the electrical inspections, mechanical inspections, and plumbing inspections. Each of those, there's over 2,000 permits that were issued in the 11-12 year. We'll exceed that in the 12-13 year. The zoning and, and building inspection office is also responsible for zoning enforcement, which means that they're also doing inspections and reporting on, on the various problems that come up in terms of zoning violations, and they serve as the clerk for the zoning board of review. So it's, it's a multi-dimensional office in terms of its responsibility with the building official being responsible for those. We will also be introducing probably sometime in the 13-14 year, new software which will provide us with the ability to automate and provide, let pass the building codes, building permits, and also be able to put an online tracking system for complaints. Get complaints, the complaints can be filed online. We can do the follow-up and get back to the people online. This is something that we've been looking at. It won't be one of the primary programs that are instituted. We've got to do the financials first and the personnel system second, but this will be the third program element that would then be introduced once we get all of the financial systems and, and personnel programs in place. And it'll, Jeff will be responsible for a good portion of that in conjunction with John Shock.
Steve, back to the planning and zoning board. Do you know when those, that $20 stipend per meeting was set, when that amount was set? What year?
Many years ago. That hasn't changed. I can't, I, I don't remember it changing. It may have been at $10 in the, in the 70s, but I think it's been probably since the 80s. It's got to, got to have been in the $20 range.
I know there was one change, but I can't remember when it was, but I can't remember what it was.
You can take a look and see if we can find that for you, but I think it goes well back 20 years.
And the council, council fees?
That went up probably 10 years ago, just, just before you got on.
That's 13 or 14 years ago.
That's what attracted you, Jim.
Yeah, the money attracted me.
The good news is, the good news is you can look at that. The bad news is you can't change it for the existing council.
I don't.
Actually, I do have a report that the state prepared last year on council salaries I can share with the council.
That'd be wonderful.
It's all over the lot. I mean, Block Island has the first warden that gets $7,900. I, I don't know how, how that works that way. There's some communities that are providing healthcare, dental care, eye care, life insurance. So.
Travel expenses. Steve, we're very interested in this.
That's the only one we didn't see was travel expense in that report. But it's, it's all over the lot. It doesn't matter whether it's a large community, a small community, it's just really a, a local community preference as to how they set those stipends. So I'll get, I'll get that information to you. The last department that we need to look at is the library department, and that would take you to narrative page 40. And it would take you to the expenditures on page GF 24. On page 41 of the narrative, I provide you with a idea of where the revenues are coming from for the, for the entire library program. We're looking at $81,000 that's generated through endowment funds or petty cash. That's projected for the 2013-14 year. It's the same amount that was projected in 12-13 when we adopted the budget. It's been reallocated, but it's same $81,000. We're also forecasting, as I mentioned in the message, $203,945 coming in from the state grant program as well as the endowment, state endowment for the libraries. So overall, you've got a program budget that would expend $948,000, of which the total tax requirement would be at $663,000. One of the things that's important to note is with the libraries, unlike any other municipal department, for us to continue to be able to receive the state revenues for the libraries, we have to spend more, we, there is a maintenance of effort requirement, which means that you need to spend as much as you spent in the prior year. If there's reductions in that, you can lose the state aid. One of the things I've recommended this year is to increase the book and publications by 4,000 up to 94,000 from the 90 it had been in the current year. In the prior year, we had spent only about $85,000. As the cost of books go up, the school, the libraries certainly can use more dollars in terms of that expense. That is done based on the fact that what we also are anticipating is some reductions in what the cost of heating fuel will be for the buildings. If you recall, we've just changed over Peastale Library, our largest library, to, to a gas-fired system, and we changed over the Robert Beverly Hill Library to a propane. We appropriated $31,000 toward heating fuels in the 2012-13 year, where estimating that we'll spend only about $17,000. I've forecast $24,000 for next year just as a placeholder because we really aren't going to know how much savings we're going to see on the natural gas at Peastale Library until we get some experience with it, but that's still showing about a $7,000 reduction from the, the current year. Also a thing that, that we're going to have to look at in the 13-14 year and going forward is that Champlin has always been responsible, been a responsible party for providing for updates and upgrades of our equipment, our computer equipment. As of the 13-14 year, they are no longer looking to continue to replace the computers. At this point, I think that there's approximately 50 units in the library system that's used computer-wise, and what we're looking at is putting $5,000 in each year at this point to be able to start some of the replacements on some of the older VT units that would have to be replaced. So that's why you've got the increase there on the computer equipment. Hopefully Champlin will be back in, in that business in the future, but if it isn't, the town's going to have to, have to step up as far as the automated, automated equipment and the use of internet in the library is going to become a much bigger expense for the towns themselves. I mean, the amount of money that's been contributed by Champlin and the fabulous things that have been able to be accomplished in our libraries as far as the, the share, the clan system that's in place and the sharing with all of our libraries was all made possible through Champlin. And Shirley's also been quite effective in obtaining annual grants from Champlin for smaller projects that, that can be done at one of the three libraries. Particularly with the painting of the Kingston Library, a lot of that, I think it was $90,000 came, $90,000 came through Champlin for that purpose. So they're still a great partner for the libraries, but what they're trying to do is to focus in different areas from where they have focused in the past.
I just have a quick question, and this is only a point of clarification for me. I, I read this over and I'm looking at the information requests received in terms of the libraries, and in 2011 and 2012, there was $27,949, and I'm on page N41, and 2012-13, $28,000. I'm wondering why, or I missed something perhaps, why it went down to 2800 as a projection for this fiscal year?
It went down because there was a typo on that report.
Oh, okay.
Add a zero and you'll be happy.
Okay, I just, I was reading this and I said, this just doesn't make sense to me.
No, we found that today. One of the things that, that happens when you put out a 192-page budget, it's like weeding a garden, no matter how many times you.
Of course.
You, you find something else that, that one will weed is grown. And I swear that that zero was there when we.
I'm sure it was. It just struck a chord and I was like, whoa, why, what?
It was not Shirley's fault. Shirley gave us one that said 28,000, and somehow we missed it when it was, when it was put in there.
I was reading it and I said, wow, that's huge. I just, I don't know what the difference could be.
It's our first admitted mistake.
You did good. You did good. Thank you.
Those are all the accounts that we were going to go through tonight. If there's no additional questions.
You go first if you want.
No, Meg, you go.
Mine's not a question. I just want to put this out there and I want to say something because I keep going back to page N10, under the finance department, budget number 610. Kudos to you, Steve and Alan. I know that you're very involved with this, but by doing what you did in restructuring the debt, that savings, although the majority of it will not be seen until the year 2016, that's huge for the town. I think, I think, I think that's wonderful. I commend you and your department for the hard work in restructuring the bonds. That's.
Well, one of the reasons why we did that was because that's the year we're going to be selling some new debt, so we didn't want to see a spike in the tax rate associated with that new debt.
Yes, I was reading that.
So this will help reduce that pain in the 2015-16 year.
But that's kind of, that's, that's a nice big reduction, two ways, 426,000 and then 87,602. Kudos to you. That's huge for the town. Thank you.
The, the bond market as far as interest rates was, you know, now you also see on the investment earnings that those are down and that's the offset.
Down to like less than 1%. I know. But, but still, I mean, you're saving us some pennies, so thank you.
Any other questions? Jim?
Steve, we talked about real estate market value. Motor vehicles, where, where's the governor and general assembly on going to that market value approach? Is that dead in the water? What's happening?
As I said to you earlier, there's four different bills that have been issued. None of them have come through hearings at this point that I'm aware of. Each of them would have some impact. The one that would just change it in value would have considerable impact. The one that would have the step-up plan would have less, it would be a 5% reduction theoretically this year and then another 5% next year. The one that would come up with a flat tax, I haven't even been able to estimate what that would mean at this point. But I, I think that, you know, the, the real issue here is that the bottom line of the levy is the bottom line of the levy. And if they're going to reduce it out of the motor vehicles, they're just putting it out of the real estate. And, you know, the, there, there's some logic that you want to have some of the value in the motor vehicles because people that do not own real estate yet use our roads and have, should have some contribution value other than what they assume that through their rental. So I mean, it, it's a case of really what pocket you're going to take the money out of.
Well, one option on that, if you didn't want to put it onto the real estate, you always have that $3,000 exemption that's out there that you could reduce that back and, and that may cover the, some of the 20%.
I'm going to let him recommend that. I got killed with it last time.
Just an option.
Just an option.
I just wanted to, again, thank Steve and Alan and Susan McCartney and Andy and Shirley. And I will give you a chance, Shirley, if there's anything that you want to highlight at the microphone in a minute in reference to the library. The level of detail and the analogy. The level of detail in the analysis, and tonight, it's not even the analysis of every penny. He has brought it down to even a fraction or a decimal of a, of a cent. And we realize that you have lost time due to the storms and you have burnt the candle into many, many late hours. So this town council is much appreciative of all the time and the work and effort and Andy and Colleen and Vin and Jean, really, very, very appreciative. So with that said, I have a few announcements at the end, but I would like to give Shirley an opportunity if there's anything that you want to highlight with the library.
I don't have anything unless you have questions.
Any questions for Shirley now that we have her? Thank you. The only announcement I want to make sure that the town council is aware of, that I received an invitation through phone call, and you should have all received an email through University of Rhode Island, that they have invited you to the basketball game on Saturday with two o'clock game, and it is, doors open at one o'clock. And there is an RSVP, I believe it's March sixth. The other phone call that I received today was from the Chamber of Commerce, Elizabeth Berman, on Wednesday from five to seven. The Ocean State Waves event at Bomb Squad, which is in the Palisades Mill. It's an event called Introduction to the Community, Wednesday, five to seven. With that said, any further questions? Meeting adjourned. Thank you.